Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. This time, the meeting is open to the public, and we do have a few guests with us. First one is Don Benick, and welcome, Don. I hope you're enjoying this beautiful weather that's out there. Welcome, Don.
We were helping to meet just about three years ago. I'm lucky to be here.
Yep.
I'm Donald.
Glad to see you.
Yeah, I know you're glad to see me compared to December 20th of 19. Anyway, somebody asked me about the crosswalk in front of the post office because somebody was walking and they almost seen the lady get hit there by a car. And they says, well, go to the crosswalk at the intersection. Shouldn't there be some kind of signage there that tells you that a crosswalk is there?
So we'll definitely take that under consideration.
You can't even see if there's one there. Usually at a corner, they are. They did that up at Webster School there.
Lights or, you know, blinky lights.
Flashing or something like that because I just come now and I says, you can't even see it till you're on top of it.
I think it's a good comment. We'll write that down.
Because I seen that in 1970s there someplace. Two ladies got killed up at Sixth Street and up there on Sabbath Avenue.
Sure.
And then they moved that crosswalk for the school kids down. There's a sign that says crosswalk ahead.
Right.
And there, the speed limit's faster too, about 40 mile an hour.
Especially in areas that have a lot of traffic, you know. You gotta get the attention to the crosswalk. So I think it's a good.
But there, you got parking on both sides at times, and sometimes you don't see it until it's too late.
Right, right.
But I did stop one time. I was coming this way, and then I didn't know if the guy who was going west was gonna stop for the pedestrians in the crosswalk, so.
Sure.
And I said, should I have stopped or not? Well, yeah, you're supposed to stop, but I was worried about that car coming from the opposite direction. He did stop, but you never know.
Sure.
Okay, then, thank you.
Thank you. We have Sue, and we're talking about a community garden. Welcome, Sue. You can just come up to the podium and... Welcome, and welcome to our...to tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. It's nice to be here.
Maybe just say your address, where you're from, and...
Yeah, you got the address right. 2469.
Oh, yep, I do have it. I do have it here. Okay.
Yeah. I lived here for almost 30 years, and our people, the Moore community, has grown a lot, you know, the last several years here. And we do a lot of gardening for our family because we, you know, like, we still like our food, and so it's really expensive to go out there. And also, we hear that, you know, when you buy it, when you buy the food from the supermarket, a lot of people put a lot of pesticides, you know, on it. So we have a lot of friends and members in the North St. Paul Community Center asking me to see if we...how can we get some land from the city of North St. Paul since we are here? And a lot of places, you know, they do give, you know, like, land for the people that live in that city to do gardening. So that's why I'm here. And today, it's only last minute, so I am the only one here, but we have a lot of people that are interested. And so that's why I'm here, to see if you would grant us a land in the city of North St. Paul too, for us to do some, you know, some gardening. And we could also donate it to the Food Shelf in here in North St. Paul too. I will coordinate that once we get that, so. So that's why I'm here.
Well, that's a good suggestion, and I think we've talked about it in the past. I know Parks and Rec, we've talked about possibly doing a community garden somewhere. We just don't know where, you know, to have it because it's gotta be a pretty substantial, you know, piece of property to allow, you know, for the growth of, you know, quite a bit of produce or what have you. But yeah, we're definitely looking into that. We'll put it on our agenda.
Yeah, because some other places, they could give like 40 by 40. Some places, they could get like 20 by 40 or something like that to first. So if you, yeah.
Yep.
It doesn't have to be a huge land, you know. I mean, per person, per person would be, yeah. If we had more, that'd be great, but if 40 by 40.
Well, there's one spot, Country Club Park, I know we looked at at some point to have. And then maybe Councilmember Cole could probably put that on his radar to look at that park to possibly put a community garden in. But I can't promise anything. I mean, I think there's options out there.
Uh-huh. So how do I follow up with this?
I'm turning it over to Councilmember Cole.
Okay.
So he's part of...he's the liaison for the Park and Rec.
Okay.
And I believe if there's some open land, it would be part of a park.
I want to make sure. Our member Cole.
Double check. I believe our next Park and Rec meeting, 1, 2, 3, is the 23rd. Wednesday, the 23rd, and I'll make sure that it gets on the agenda to be discussed.
It's on Thanksgiving, though. You might have it a week prior.
Oh, you know what? I bet we did. I bet we moved it.
Yeah, that is...
I'll double check. We probably didn't move it up a week. Thanks, Kenny.
So should I come here to find out about the meeting?
So the city manager will have note of it, and we're gonna turn it over to the Park and Rec to get it on their agenda, talk about it.
Okay.
You may want to go to their meeting if you would like.
Do I...okay, so someone's gonna forward this information to me once something?
If you can leave us your contact information, we can absolutely forward it. Wonderful. We can forward the information.
Contact information right there, but I don't have my...I don't have the email there, so...
Why don't you add your email to it, and then we'll turn it over to...
Okay.
So the next Park and Rec meeting is the 16th at 6:30 here.
16, 6:30?
Mm-hmm.
16, November 16.
I think it's a great idea. We just gotta find space and if it'll work.
And I think it would be very beneficial if you were able to make it. If you can't, that's understandable.
I would like to.
Because I'm sure that the Park and Rec Commission is gonna have questions. You know, what additional amenities do you need? You know, does there need to be water on the site? What, you know, you would be able to bring a wealth more information than what I would be able to provide, so.
Uh-huh, yeah, 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 that'd be great. But if the city of North St. Paul could provide some, that'd be great too, like, yeah, so.
I'm assuming there's water there, but it's not a irrigated park.
No.
They have the building there. They have it there. I don't know if they have an outside spigot or not.
I think it's worth looking into. So thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Yep, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
And we got...last one is Bob.
Welcome, Bob. Thank you. Bob Van Conite with the Car Show. We finally wrapped everything up actually today, and we paid the city so they don't send Baba out looking for us.
Good, good.
But I want to thank the mayor, the city council, the city manager, our maintenance, our police, our firemen. If we needed anything, they were always there, and then we pick-on-carry at times to help us out. You know, everybody's been there to help us, and that's what makes the show work. It isn't all our yellow shirts on the corner. We gotta have everybody in the background. It was a good season. We ended up with some excess money, and we've always looked for charities. And I got a grandson that goes to Cowan School. I haven't been involved in school stuff in a long time. We thought, hey, let's see about doing some Christmas for some of the kids. Well, I'll tell you what, I had a rude awakening. There is a lot of needy people in Cowan School and the rest of our schools. So we donated a pretty good chunk of money to them. I would like to see any other business or organization or individuals step up to whatever your school is and go talk to them because there's a lot of kids that ain't gonna have Christmas. But thank you, guys, but no, we're off...we're back on our feet. We're doing well, and next year will be the 30th.
Big celebrate fireworks.
Well, we'll deal...we can do that in some of the big holes that'd be in Main Street.
Bob, I just want to say the relationship between the city and the Car Show over the past, you know, years has increased tremendously. We can't do it without you. You can't do it without us, and that relationship has grown, and you put on a fabulous show. It brings in thousands of people to our downtown. People love it. It's safe. It's for all family members. So I want to say kudos to you and to your team of volunteers that you offer something that our city, that other cities don't have and other cities want, and...
It's really went well. Like I said, we've got a damn good bunch of workers, and we got everybody here on board, and that plays a big part. It makes a lot easier when you can go, oh, God, I hate to go ask them because they're gonna tell us, take a hike. Let's go. Hey, come on, ask them. What do you need?
Right.
And maintenance has been just great to us.
Right.
But thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom. We do have a public hearing, and I'll turn that over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item on the public hearing, and that's tax increment financing, the redevelopment District Number 4-12, the Lilly Building Redevelopment Project. And then we got Michaela here from Baker Tilly to discuss that.
Welcome, Michaela.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here tonight to represent the action item of the proposed tax increment financing redevelopment District Number 4-12 to facilitate redevelopment of the Lilly Building and surrounding properties in downtown. Again, tonight before you is the public hearing to take any public comment. Following that, the action items are to consider adoption of the tax increment financing plan for the tax increment financing redevelopment district as well as consideration for approval of the TIF assistance agreement between the city of North St. Paul and the developer, 2515 NSP LLC. So tonight, what I have before you is a short presentation, just kind of walking through the project summary of the financial details, and would be happy to address or answer any questions that you may have. So the project before you, it's approximately 82 residential housing units comprising a mix of Studio One and two-bedroom floor plans. The developer had provided or submitted a request for financial assistance to the city related to the financial gap of the redevelopment project. Their initial request was about 6.1 million, and that was to assist with financing of the extraordinary redevelopment costs of the project. This did require the creation of a redevelopment tax increment district, which does have a maximum term of 26 years, and that is 25 years of receipt of increment after the first year. And the request is for pay-as-you-go financing, in which the developer would be reimbursed for certain TIF-eligible redevelopment costs of the project. Here's a map just showing the boundaries of the district. There are four properties, four parcel IDs that are included within the redevelopment district. Oh, is it not sharing? It could be anywhere. Yeah.
Second Rembrandt.
Okay. Sorry.
Or Van Gogh.
Sorry. I always have to do a quick primer on what tax increment financing is because even though I've been before, I think all of you a couple of times talking about it. But it is a financing tool that cities use to capture the incremental growth resulting from a new development or redevelopment project. There is a fixed term for the capturing of the incremental taxes, and then that new development tax capacity is added to the taxing base for the taxing entities. So the tax increment revenues is generated by the increased value resulting from that new development or redevelopment project. And here's a little picture just showing that the base value, the green area, is the current value of the property. The taxes are frozen and continue going to the city, county, and school over the life of the tax increment district. The gray shaded area, that's incremental taxes that are captured by the tax increment district to facilitate redevelopment of the project site. Once the obligations have been fulfilled, you'll see the green, the lighter green area that is the new tax base that is available for all the taxing entities once the district has been decertified. There are only certain costs that we can finance with tax increment financing, and they are typically public improvements, which could include streets, utilities, parking, sidewalks, land acquisition, soil correction, site preparation, and then parking costs. So really, all of the costs prior to vertical construction of the new project. There are financing options for projects, and you'll see both a combination of pay-as-you-go or upfront. In this case, we are looking at pay-as-you-go in which the developer finances all of the costs upfront, and then a TIF note is issued by the city to the developer, and then the developers reimburse over time with available tax increments that are generated from the new redevelopment project, as opposed to upfront city financed, in which the city finances a portion of the costs upfront through either an interfund loan or the issuance of bonds. Again, the request tonight is for pay-as-you-go financing, which shifts or mitigates the risks to the city of participating in the project since the developer is responsible for obtaining the financing to do the project. This is just sources and uses of funds for the project. It is about a $25.6 million project that the developer is financing with the combination of bank financing and owner equity. And you'll see the uses of funds includes the acquisition, the pre-development, the environmental construction, off-site improvements, and then some of the soft costs related to the project. The estimated TIF-eligible expenses, again, the developer's request initially was for 6.1 million. Listed here are the categories of those costs, including acquisition of the property, environmental remediation, demolition of the existing substandard buildings, some public improvements, primarily parking and other improvements, site improvements to prepare the site for development. So the total of those is 6.1 million. The extraordinary costs and those deemed reimbursable through the both availability of TIF and the need for public assistance is 5.3 million. So that recommended amount, as we'll get into the terms of the TIF assistance, is for reimbursement of up to 5.3 of extraordinary redevelopment costs within these categories for the project. Here's just an outline of the tax increment revenue estimates. The current taxable value that we've assumed is about 250,000 per unit for the 82-unit project. The existing base value today is about 1.6 million. The total estimated taxable value upon completion is about 20.5. And over the annual increment upon full build-out, it's about 328,000. Over the life of the district, it's estimated to be about 11.696 million. We have structured that the city would retain a percentage of the annual increment for either administrative or other redevelopment activities within the district. So that amount is about, or excuse me, in the project area, so that amount is about 1.76. That's retained by the city, leaving 9.9 available to the developer. And again, the estimated present value of that amount over 26 years with 4.25% interest rates, 5.3 million. Just a reminder, so the project area, Development District Number 4, this is the area in which a portion of the tax increment dollars can be spent from individual tax increment districts. The boundaries of your Development District Number 4, the project area, are coterminous with the boundaries of the city. The tax increment district before you, TIF Number 4-12, is created within that project area, and the TIF plan that you're being asked to consider contains the budget, the estimated total development costs and sources of revenue, the geographic boundaries, and the purpose and statutory authority for which the district's being created. The second to last step is a public hearing, which is the action tonight. Following that, assuming creation of the district, the county certifies the district and becomes the administrative authority or administrator of the district in the future tax increments. In order to qualify as a redevelopment district, and there was a study that was done by LHB to determine qualification, at least 50% of the buildings within the district are considered substandard, and that means that at the cost of rent of air, bringing the buildings up to a combination of code and condition deficiencies is greater than 15% of the cost of replacing that build, those buildings. And the next test is that at least 70% of the area within the district is occupied by buildings, streets, parking lots, not green space. And lastly, the substandard buildings are reasonably distributed throughout the district. There are, as I mentioned, four parcels that are included within the district, and this is from the tax increment financing plan listing those parcels. I mentioned the budget. Again, the total estimated public cost is the 11.696 million with a breakdown between the acquisitions, site improvements, public improvements, and then administrative expenses. Sources and use, or excuse me, the sources need to equal the public cost, so the total estimated tax increments is, again, 11.696 million. So how we got to the $5.3 million recommendation is there is a financial review that's done to determine, one, if the project as proposed would be unlikely to proceed but for the use of the tax increment financing tool, and if assistance is deemed necessary to determine what the appropriate amount in terms of that public assistance are. So prior to approving the tax increment district, there are findings that need to be made. One is that the project does qualify as a redevelopment tax increment district. Two, that the project as proposed would not proceed but for the use of tax increment financing. And three, the increased market value of the property to be developed is greater with the use of tax increment financing than if no assistance had been provided. Again, these are the parameters that were used when determining what the recommended amount of tax increment assistance is for this particular project. And there's a range of items that we look at in understanding that assistance is necessary, and if it is, what an appropriate level would be based on the level of public and private investment and the level of extraordinary costs. So switching gears to the terms of the TIF assistance, again, the total development cost is estimated to be 25.6, and I do believe the costs have gone up from that, but that was the initial estimate provided. Again, the developer is responsible for financing the, all of the upfront costs. The TIF increment would be provided as reimbursement to the developer for those certain TIF-eligible expenses. Following completion of the project and meeting their terms of the agreement, the city would issue a pay-as-you-go note to the developer for up to 5.3 million with the 4.25% interest rate. It is a maximum 26-year term of assistance with semi-annual payments made to the developer pursuant to the terms of the agreement, with the anticipated first payment being August 1st of 2025, and in the maximum 26 years, the final payment would be February 1st of 2051. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or step aside for the public hearing as the council would choose.
Any questions for Michaela? Good presentation. I know a lot of work has gone into putting that together, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing up at 6:59. Is there any comment from the public? Michaela's here to answer any questions. Anybody on Zoom? Nothing? So at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And you're looking for, I believe, two resolutions. Let me get that here real quick here. So the first resolution is establishing the tax increment financing for redevelopment District Number 4-12 within Development District Number 4, approving the tax increment financing plan therefore and authorizing the interfund loan. That is the first motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
First resolution, I should say.
Make a motion.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The second one is resolution authorizing execution of a TIF assistant agreement. Is there...
Still moved.
So moved by Councilmember Cole. Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. So I think we got it all in order, and Jim, I know you're in the audience, and if you want to say a few comments, I'd love to have you come up, and the city really appreciates the development that's gonna be happening in our town, and we welcome you and welcome the families that are involved, and...
Yeah. We're really excited. You know, the city and Michaela and Morgan and all the other staff has been so professional and so helpful to us, and we're so grateful for your support. We were chatting before the meeting started, and we started looking at this project. I remember interest rates being like mid-3s, and now they're almost double that. So your help, if you didn't help, we wouldn't have a project, so really just thankful for everybody's hard work, and we're gonna keep working hard too to get going on the thing.
And we've heard a lot of good things about you and your team, and, you know, it's a good fit for our city and, you know, what we're gonna have in the downtown. You know, we are going through a renaissance down there.
Oh, it's fantastic.
I think you're...
Just like I said, our first meeting is the hidden gem down here.
Right.
And we're so thankful to be able to have this opportunity too.
And I think that building really fits in the downtown, and it's gonna be exciting, and people are really gonna come to our town and see, I think, a redo of our downtown.
Yeah, really excited, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for your help.
Thank you, thank you.
Keep working hard every day.
All right.
All right, thanks.
So, yeah, it's a big milestone for us for this project moving forward, and Jim, so you would start the process, I would assume, fairly soon, and when do you expect maybe the buildings to have some sort of taken down or what have you?
Sure, sure. Well, we're scheduled...
Maybe just go through the process of what...
Yeah, there was some litigation about tenancy in one of the Lilly Building that's been resolved. So we're scheduled to close on that property about November 15, and then we have a couple things with Mr. Peach to work out, and we're hopefully closing with him in beginning to mid-December. As you know, we filed some grants for some of the pollution and other things. Some of those grants, we have to wait until there's technically an award before we can do anything, otherwise eligible costs are eligible costs anymore. So depending upon that timing, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd go and remediate and then rip the buildings down, and...but anyway, I would anticipate you'd see the buildings come down sometime in the first quarter.
Of 2023.
Yeah.
Good.
Based on that, so.
But people will be looking forward to it.
Yeah. We'll have a couple parties along the way.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Get back to the agenda here. So I'll...we don't have the item number nine. We move that to the...oh, no, 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 we do have the public comment. So we do have the public comment for the unmanned aerial vehicles. The only reason we're keeping it on here is in case there's somebody in the public that came to the meeting that wanted to be heard tonight, and I think we'll just continue that public comment until the next meeting also. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to talk in regard to the unmanned aerial vehicles, or if there's anybody online that needs to talk about it, they can do so at this time. So there is nobody here, so I'd like to make a motion to extend the...
To continue the public comment period till your next meeting, when the action item will also be on the agenda.
Okay, so we need a motion for that to, for continuance of the public comment.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And then we're into city business and action items, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl, and we did remove the item A for the unmanned aerial vehicles, so turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
All right, next up is the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project, which is approved of the pay voucher number 14 and final. We got Mr. Morgan here, our city engineer, to discuss that.
So your son doesn't get to see you actually in work now. You actually sent him away and told him to, you know, don't watch me work or what happened.
He's still of civic information, I think, for the evening, and spared himself, I guess, from seeing his dad in the hot seat. I don't know.
We just wanted the dirt on you.
Right. So now it's, yes, it's... So now it's, yes, it's it's a free, free open season on your city engineer here tonight. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item before you tonight is to consider a resolution which is accepting the twenty twenty Street and Utility Improvement Project in finality, and it's authorizing the final payment. You may recall that this project included improvements primarily on Seventh Avenue between First Street and Third Street, and also sections of Second Street and Fourth Avenue as well, too, making improvements to the roads, sidewalks, underground utilities, water sewer, that sort of thing. A major component of the funding for this project was state aid funds, municipal state aid funds. The city was granted in advance for portions of this project funding, also for the McKnight Road Project, which was completed and filed out earlier. So that was a big part. That explains a lot of the numbers that you see in the designation for the project. Those are all state aid designation numbers that allow MINDOT and the state to be able to track those funds along with the different projects. So as we finalize these contracts, you know, one of the things that the city engineer needs to report on is how things turned out. And one thing that I do need to report on is an overage with respect to the final contract amount. This is something that I think that, you know, based on my conversations with the city manager, finance director, is something that we want to do more thoroughly and completely on all projects moving forward, and maybe even in real time, not waiting for the final payment. But all of the things that are included in the project and that were completed by the contractor have been finalized. They've been accepted by the city or by city forces as being complete. And now, you know, if this council resolution is adopted, then the project would move into a warranty or maintenance period. And there is a warranty maintenance on workmanship and materials on this and all of our city projects that will be inspected following the end of that. So if there are issues, you know, there will be an opportunity to correct those before the end of the maintenance period. We're here at the end of twenty twenty-two, and this was a twenty twenty project, so not a lot has happened this year. There's a little bit of punch list work that the contractor needed to complete earlier in the construction season, but mostly we were waiting for the contractor to get their paperwork together. There's certain forms that are identified in the staff memo that they need to submit for our financial audit to make the contract hold before we'll take a final payment to the council for consideration. But back to the reporting. So the final contract amount does reflect about a six point five percent increase over the the contract amount. That can be explained because this is a per-unit type of contract. It's not a lump sum. So if there's more of a quantity of a specific item that goes over the original estimated quantity of that item, so square feet of sidewalk, for example, and the contractor is directed and needs to complete that amount of extra work to finish the contract, that explains why some of those amounts go over.
So it's all in the framework of the the contract?
Right. Now, on a typical project, we anticipate that we would, within five percent, hopefully come across those unexpected or unanticipated things that might result in an overage. If all goes perfectly, we may see contracts, and we have had them here in North St. Paul where we come in under. But certainly going over bears some explanation to the council. And so there are basically kind of two categories, as I see it, which are reported in the memo here. Some of these things are state aid eligible items, so those would be things that are above ground and adjacent to the streets, on the state aid streets. We did do some extra sidewalk work, which was directed to extend some of the concrete sidewalk removal and replacement because just outside of the project limits, there were some areas that could have been replaced and had not been identified prior to the project. So some additional public improvements were made, and that certainly cost some money. There were also some extension of new sidewalks in the vicinity of the the old workforce center across from Burwells on Second Street to bring that sidewalk up to Fourth Avenue. You may recall that it was previous city council, but there was discussion about eventually reaching that sidewalk on Second Street up to the Gateway Trail and to Rotary Park. And so that would need to be something that would have to happen in the future. So we didn't authorize getting it all the way there, but there was a little bit extra extension to get the sidewalk that was originally planned within the project past the workforce center and up to at least Fourth Avenue. Using street maintenance funds, we also did improve as a, just a maintenance overlay or an overlay, Fourth Avenue and Second Street from basically about the workforce center, which is where the reconstruction portion project ended, and we extended that all the way to North St. Paul Drive. That was all planned for.
If people don't know, the workforce center is now the food shelf.
Oh, that's right, and I knew that, but I didn't know that. I should be referring to it as the food shelf.
No, I think more, most people would know, you know, the workforce center, but, you know, I think there's people out there now who
Right.
see it as the food shelf.
And I guess, and that's worth mentioning, I mean, so some of the extra work that was done was to facilitate pedestrian access and also ADA accessibility access into that building, which at the time was vacant, but planning for future occupancy and and access from the the public way to the the property building. So that that was included in some of these overages that I mentioned as well, too. Some of it are not really falling in that that state aid category. Well, before I move on from the state aid category, we did have some poor soils underneath the road, both on First Street and and on Second Street, I believe, too. So we come across those occasionally where we need to actually get the bad clays out of there and get in some good material. As far as non-state aid eligible things, we did find on the water main replacement with this project, which we did replace a lot of old water main that was ready for replacement, having had experienced a lot of breaks in and around the area. But in order to isolate that system, to be able to replace it, you have to close valves. Well, as we got out there and started to close valves, some of those valves broke, or they could not, they weren't turnable. They were so old that we couldn't actually isolate the system to replace the system on the inside, right? So even before we started on a lot of the water main work, we had to do a lot of valve replacements in and around the area, and we actually even had a water main break that we had to direct the contractor to go and fix to be able to to make that a whole project. There are some other little things, but it all does add up where some of the electrical primary line on the north side of Seventh Avenue was just too close to where the pole bases for city streetlights needed to go. And so kind of a special construction technique was necessary to be able to pour those in place instead of using the standard kind of precast bases. That cost some additional money as well, too, which was included in change order. So all that together does, you know, result in some overage that takes us above that planned five percent contingency. Again, six point five percent, the the dollars have been spent. I mean, the the amount authorized with this final contract pavement is primarily just releasing the retainage, which has been held back until the the project is ready to be accepted by the city. So basically, as we get to this point, we're not asking for authorization on these overages, but they have been realized at this point, and this is simply a report to the city council at this time. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, but again, the the recommended action is to adopt by resolution the the final, or to the approval of the final pay voucher number sixteen to T.A. Schiffsky and Sons in the amount of ninety-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eight cents for the twenty twenty Street and Utility Improvement Project. And if adopted, again, this will move the project into the maintenance and warranty period. The contractor has supplied a warranty bond to secure the workmanship and materials on the project during that maintenance period. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Morgan? If not, off on a side, you guys do extremely good work for us. I just want to tell you that. That the relationship is really good with the city, and your professionalism is is very, very good. So, thank you.
It's an honor to serve the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So at this time, motion for a resolution authorizing final payment for the twenty twenty Street and Utility Improvement Project.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. It's funny, it was two years ago, the start of that project, so.
Takes a while, but thank you.
Yep, thank you. City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. So reports of city manager and departments. Start off with Dan and his department of upgrading the in-code system. Ran all their checks on the system from payroll to invoices to accounts payable. Everything checked out very well. They handled it great. Their department all came together and ran the system checks, and everything turned out well. It was a good upgrade. Now we'll move on to the the new upgraded software shortly, right? And now that we're on the new system, so, but everything went well. So kudos to you guys. Thank you. So the electric department is doing pole changeouts still, only had a couple left before the frost sets in. We did have a a large power outage on Saturday morning, probably about twenty-five after four or so. A pole going down highway, or a car going down Highway one twenty drove through a utility pole, which is no small feat. Those are fifty-five-foot poles, so the bases are rather large. And amazingly enough, it didn't take the power out at that point. The pole was broken, kind of leaning to the side. We have an, uh, Excel Energy has three-phase power on the top of that pole, and we have underbuild underneath that. And when the pole leaned off to the side, the wires were actually touching, and it didn't burn to the ground due to the insulation that was on the wire. We just got really lucky with that. That would have been a long outage. But in working with Excel Energy, the electric department did a great job in coordinating the power outage because they had to take their circuit out at the same time we had to take our circuit out so we could get that stood back up, so we didn't have a huge ball of fire up there. The outage...
You're talking electronic, electric terms now that, you know...
I'm sorry. I didn't even realize it when I say it, sorry. So we, they took the systems out of power, you know, got ahold of the pole, straightened it up, and then they were able to set a new pole in later. But the, they were able to transfer some of the load that was on that circuit, so it wasn't as big of a power outage as it could have been. And the power outage was less than an hour. I think it was more like fifty minutes, maybe. So they did a really good job in getting that back online and controlling a situation that could have been really bad. We're still working on trying to get quotes and orders for equipment, which is still an issue. They're they're opening it up for, well, it could be as little as one day until the amount of quota that they have available gets ordered. So half-ton trucks, for example, they're not even taking orders anymore for the twenty twenty-threes. They're going to the twenty twenty-fours. They're so far backed up. So issues with Public Works and Electric trying to get newer vehicles that are due for changeouts according to the SIP plan, that we's just not being able to do it in a very timely fashion. So it's going to be a while as we get those changeouts taken care of. But not only just trucks, but, you know, we're looking at generators. They're they're out of ways. We're just seeing it in every aspect. Public Works is still doing flushings, and they're on their second round of leaf pickup around town with their street sweepings. So they're doing good with that, hoping to be finishing that up this week, I even believe. I think that's all I have.
Anything on the downtown? Is the downtown plantings, are they all taken care of now, and the irrigation is all in and...
So the sleeves are in. Maybe, Morgan, do you know more about that? Do we have the sleeves in? Have they been working on the actual sprinkler system now?
Mr. Mayor, for the council, unfortunately, my update sounds exactly the same as last time, so it's not done. The sleeves are in. Portions of, or maybe almost all of the irrigation is in. Not all of the plantings are in, but they're very close. So kind of the same status as last time, but I don't think that following the completion of their work, we're going to have any outstanding items. We expect it to be wrapped up, and the weather's been cooperating so far, so.
Thank you.
May for a little more clarity with that. When we say the sleeves are in, what they do is they bore in a conduit from plantings to plantings, and then what they'll do is they'll cut into that pipe, and then they'll run the irrigation piping through there and then put sprinkler systems in those different plantings. But they're getting really close on that.
We've had a lot of questions in regards to Eldridge area. They're doing a lot of locations for water, and our whole streets are marked up, up and down the street. I don't know what's going on there.
I will have to look into that for you and get back to you.
What comes all, it comes two blocks away.
From the home, from the student build?
All in the street, Belmont, Eldridge.
I'm not sure.
I have not reviewed a right-of-way permit for like the gas company. I mean, it would typically be related to you to some sort of utility work is, you know, planning something. If it was near the, you know, student built home, I would expect to be
I'd have been close.
extension of services there, but, yeah, we'll have to look more into that. I'm not aware of a specific activity that
They can do it though. I'm curious now.
Somebody would be doing. Yeah, we'll look into it.
The whole street, all the way up the street is all marked up, so, okay.
Nothing further.
Reports of council commissions and committees, Councilmember Cole.
The Park and Rec had their meeting on the twenty-sixth. Had a lot of good dialogue as far as what was going on and forward planning. They did come to a resolution that that should be in front of us the next meeting regarding Housie Park and fixing the tennis court and re-appropriating the space to primarily pickleball, as well as putting an ADA trail that would then connect the pickleball court with the picnic pavilion, the picnic pavilion with the
Shelter?
The regular, the regular enclosed pavilion that's there. Currently, there's only ADA sidewalk from the street to the actual enclosed pavilion, so this will connect the the whole flow through there. It will be an expensive project, but it's a it's a project that that the Park and Rec feels and deems important, especially due to its location to downtown. Next Park and Rec meeting will be the sixteenth at six thirty here in Chambers, and one of the items will be the Country Club Park and turning it into a public garden area. It's on my agenda. EDAs meet next up, next upcoming meeting is the fifteenth here in Chambers at three o'clock. And that would be it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, not a whole lot of new updates. The Arts and Culture Commission has a meeting this Wednesday at six thirty here in Sandberg Room. They'll continue talking about Project Snowy and moving that project forward. In regards to the Planning Commission, the next meeting here will be Thursday, November third, here in the chambers at six thirty. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Business Association meeting will be, luncheon will be November eighth, next Tuesday, and it'll be a banking, the Old National Bank, Premier Bank will have bankers there, and they're going to discuss, what are they going to discuss here?
Commercial banking.
Commercial banking.
Little businesses.
The businesses, so. That'll be at noon at the Legion Club. That's all I have.
Thank you. General Business, Councilmember Cole.
I have nothing really at this time, but my assumption is you'll cover off the ribbon cutting that was done last week. So I will, I will grant my minutes to you.
Thank you. General Business, Councilmember Wong.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Well, with all your little jack-o'-lanterns, you can recycle them down by the museum there on Sixth or Seventh. Anne Henry by the museum, and that will be until November sixth, and it goes to a farm. So the pumpkin gets used again, so it's a good way to recycle those pumpkins. That's all I have.
Not reuse for Halloween, but So I'll mention the Anchor View ribbon cutting. We had a, Councilmember Cole, Councilmember Peterson, City Manager Frandl. We had the team from the Anchor View. They hosted kind of a reception for us and very well attended. And I thought if you get a chance, go down there and take a look at it. Apartment buildings nowadays aren't built like they used to be. I mean, this is a place where there's entertainment, there's meeting rooms, there's, you know, places to workout. I mean, it's a billiard room, you know, it's it's fun places to live. And, you know, when I was back in college or whatever, apartments were just apartments, and you didn't have all these amenities. and you didn't have all these amenities, but you do pay for them, so. But they're over 50% rented so far, and the response is very, very good down there. So they're, they're very happy with, with the outcome so far. So, other than that, City Manager Frandl.
I'd like to add one more thing, if I could, please. I had asked WSB to help us out with a couple of grants that are available, and since we have Morgan here, I'd like him to shed a little light on that, please.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so just, this is informational, things that we're working towards. And I guess maybe there's three things. One of them is not necessarily grant-related, but Washington County and, and other folks in and around the trunk highway 120 corridor, and there have been past discussions about potentially looking at forming a group or a coalition that might involve a couple of different agencies. And so staff will be meeting with some other folks to kind of see what that might look like, who might represent the city of North St. Paul as that moves forward. So that's kind of a nice thing that, you know, across borders, there's going to be a group of people looking at future improvements on 120. Related to that, but not exactly the same, and this is part of what Brian was getting at, there's a corridors for commerce program that MINDOT is going to be soliciting for funding for major projects, and I can't remember how many millions of dollars, but several hundreds of millions of dollars will be made available to projects throughout the state. And you might recall that the city of North St. Paul did support by resolution a previous submittal for those types of funds for the planned interchange at 120 and 36. And so Washington County has reached out and said that they are looking to submit another application for corridors of commerce funding for a new interchange at 36 and 120, similar to last time. That will likely require a resolution of support from the city council as well, too. We'll find out more, I think, in the December, November, December, January timeframe, but we'll be back in front of the council probably explaining that process as we learn more from Washington County. But the fact that they're looking at backing that project is certainly positive from getting that support at the county level above the local city level as well, too, to see if there could be some success. My recollection on the ranking of projects for corridors for commerce last time was that the, our interchange project did well, but it didn't quite meet the cut. And so it very well, well may be that we will fare better and possibly, you know, high enough to actually receive some funding, which would be a significant thing to potentially move that project forward. And finally, there was also what's called an active transportation grant solicitation that is being promoted by MINDOT throughout the entire state for communities to look at making improvements for active living and mostly pedestrian or bike-related improvements. And so when that solicitation came out, I consulted with the comprehensive plan and found kind of a tier one or a high, high priority sidewalk project, which is on the north side of 11th Avenue, which actually was previously discussed by the city council back in 2014 or 15. And so we submitted just a letter of intent to see if the feedback was positive, and we did receive information back saying that the project would meet eligibility. So I think the plan will be to submit an application in December. And if we do receive funds for that, that would install a sidewalk, again, north side of 11th Avenue from McKnight to Ariel, which would kind of connect a few different sidewalks in the area, including the most recent one that was built on Ariel from 11th Avenue up to 17th Avenue. And might be a, a nice connection to make. And that would have to be constructed, I think, before the end of 2024. So although that's not been on any of our capital improvement or fiscal plans, we'll just have to see if the funds can be acquired, and we'll have to make some decisions moving forward after that. But just wanted to report that as a, an opportunity, at least that's out there.
That's good news, because it's, you know, those are things that, you know, that we have to go out and look for, you know, funds that do these extra projects that enhance our walkability.
Right, and the, the dollars are there now, I think, just from my perspective and seeing the solicitations, there seem to be more and more often now than there have been in the past. And as Wayne Gretzky said, you, you miss 100% of the shoots you don't take, shots you don't take. And so, you know, I think it's, it's important to be able to see them where they're out there and find projects where we can and where they make sense, and
I always want to keep on the radar the east side of Silver Lake for connection of the trail at some point, whether that, that's included in 36 project or, or not, but I think
That will be key to that, that corridor coalition for Highway 120. And it's something that the city of North St. Paul has advocated for strongly in past meetings and, and will continue to do so, especially through that coalition, which that could be wrapped into larger projects. And it could be teed up if an interchange is, is constructed. For example, it'll be important to make sure that that interacts well with those kind of other plans up and down the, the 120 corridor as well, too. It's not just about that intersection.
Right, good, thank you. Oh, we do have, on Friday, November 11th, Veterans Park is hosting a Veterans Day Six-Gun Salute and prayer and a little, little bit of a format of a Veterans Day ceremony. At 11 o'clock.
On the 11th.
On the 11th, 11/11. So with that...
I just want to remind everybody to vote next Tuesday, the 8th. Make sure you, privileged to vote, and just remind you to go out there and vote.
Good point. At this time, motion to adjourn. So moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? That was on the consent agenda. He's out of order. So the motion's been made. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody.